I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts as December unfolds. We ask for your protection and safety over our schools, students, staff, and families. May peace fill every classroom, joy uplift every heart, and happiness abound in our community. Guide our board with wisdom and unity as they make decisions that impact many lives. Bless this holiday season with kindness, understanding, and hope, reminding us of the true spirit of love and giving. Amen.
Move on.
Anna Rowland for Nancy Semerchik.
Here.
Robin Riley.
Here.
Judy Trup for Don Nizam.
Here.
We have a forum. Welcome everybody to our Board of Education meeting for December the ninth, twenty-four. Been a long day, so let me get going. Presentations and recognitions. Presentations of the board of the month and president of education boards. We start by board of the month. Jerry Parton. All right. Come up.
I have a few words to say about Mrs. Parton. Actually had a quote from William Shaker picked up for the occasion, but I searched around a little bit this morning for a better quote. This one snagged my eye and I wanted to share this with you. This, I think, perfectly illustrates who Mrs. Parton is to East Middle School. This is from J.K. Rowling, from the author of Harry Potter. This is from The Deathly Hallows. One moment, just allow me a few words. It's a curious thing, Harry, but perhaps those who are best suited to power are those who have never sought it. Those who, like you, have leadership thrust upon them and take up the mantle because they must, and find to their own surprise that they wear it well. I can't think of a better way to describe what Mrs. Parton is to our school. This year, Mrs. Parton was thrust into leadership because we lost two of our three math teachers. She'd never stepped into a position of leadership before, and she just said, "Okay, I'll take care of this." And she has just been full force, straightforward, just going after it. So we're very pleased with Mrs. Parton. We can't say enough about her, and I'm gonna stop the grass and carry it out. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mrs. Parton. Thank you.
Thank you all. The next person to make this, board of the month, Leanne Abbott.
We get to celebrate you here.
I am going to present you this award. Leanne deserves all the recognition from everyone. She is such a blessing to me, and she was nominated, and they said, "Leanne does a wonderful job. She is ready to go above and beyond. She doesn't mind offering a hand to help, and she does it with such grace. She cleans up messes made with a smile and her infamous 'you betcha.'" Thank you, Leanne, for all you do for PCPS. You are an asset to the schools in more ways than one.
Great. Next is president of education, Lindsey Manufacturing.
Okay, so I won't embarrass her as much as I did Mrs. Parton. No, I'll just go ahead and read that, what we wrote about her. Natalie Fraser from Lindsey Manufacturing has been wonderful to East Middle School. When she heard that we wanted to celebrate teacher birthdays, she went around the businesses throughout town to buy each teacher the gift card of his or her choice. She didn't just stop there. She committed to making a run to Oklahoma City to Costco for paper products for our parties. Ms. Fraser is deeply invested in helping with the positive climate at East Middle School, and we are so fortunate to have her in Lindsey Manufacturing as a pie partner. Natalie, please.
Well, this is forcing me. The Chamber of Commerce does an amazing program called Pie Partners, and that's how Lindsey Manufacturing was partnered with East Middle School this year. And I've been so impressed with the administration and all of the teachers at that school, so kudos to.
Next, okay, comments from the public.
Ward winners, if you'll go out and get the picture real quick.
Thank you, guys.
Do we have three?
We do have three. And the first is Mr. Mark Craymeyer.
Okay, were we, have a question? Are we limited to one person per item?
No, we have three. We'll let all three of you if you like, unless you just want one representative.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you like to go first?
Would you like to do the point on?
Yeah.
Molly Burke?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. I'll go first. Sure.
Okay. I'm gonna stand up here just so you can see. Oh, come on here.
Yeah, you need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, I just wanna say thank you all for adding our agenda item to your agenda this evening, and that's for the co-op application, co-op agreement with First Lutheran School. I'm here tonight with several members of our school community, current student, parents, previous past parents, and current church family, that all believe the same thing that I believe, is that I believe that all of our students in our city should have access to the same resources, no matter where they go to school. I'm sorry. Um, it's a, um, I have spoken with Nancy about this before. I understand the concerns, several concerns have been brought up, one of which is that the criminal choice tax credit is that you all see as a negative thing for public schools. I don't see it that way, and I know that we'll see differently on that because of our public school mindset and private school mindset. You guys know full and well that I came from here. I feel like I see both sides of it. I agree that all parents should have a choice in where they send their students to school, and that money shouldn't be, you know, thankful they got back. So the issue with the co-op agreement is that we have this longstanding agreement for years and years. You know, when I was in school there, in early 2000s and probably before that. So it's come as a shock to our whole community that this has, that it's become an issue this year. I, with funding being one of the issues that was brought to me, I know that students who are in our schools, although not all of the tax dollars are sent to you, public schools do still receive money. Taxes pay your money because they pay local taxes and they pay property taxes, their parents do. So public schools, you will still receive money for those students who aren't in your walls, who you weren't needing to spend money on resources for. So while it's not the same amount as if they were in your building, it is still higher per pupil than it would be if they were there in your building. But ultimately, the issue is, is I, like I said before, I think all students, no matter where their parents choose to send them to school, deserve the same resources. Like I said, they're, these are students within Ponta City, and I believe that the vision that you would be setting by denying them these opportunities would be showing that they don't matter until they're in your building. And I know that for many of you, that's not the case. I know we're all educators, or we have been at some point, and we all deal with students, and I know in our hearts, that's not the case, but I just, that's just, that's the vision that I feel like will be portrayed. If it's not, if it doesn't go through.
Thank you so much.
This is Mr. Craymeyer. Come on up, please.
My name is Mark Craymeyer. I've owned my home at 1512 Shirley Avenue for the last 27 years. I've operated a small business in Ponta City for the last 36 years, and I've been a resident of Ponta City for more than 44 years. I'm here to speak in favor of the cooperative agreement between First Lutheran and the Ponta City Public Schools. My wife and I have raised three children in Ponta City. All of them graduated from both First Lutheran and from Ponta City High School. During the time our children were in the education system, they benefited greatly from the cooperative agreement that was in place at that time. For example, my son was a wrestler from the age of five up through high school. Because of the co-op, he was able to wrestle for Ponta City's middle school at the same time that he was attending First Lutheran. That made the transition from eighth grade at First Lutheran to the ninth grade at Pohai very smooth for him. He was already well-acclimated to the public school environment when he began attending high school. All three of our children currently live and work in Ponta City. All are married, and have blessed my wife and I with a total of eight grandchildren. Four of them currently attend First Lutheran, four aren't yet at school age. My hope is that all eight will graduate from First Lutheran, and then all eight will ultimately graduate from Ponta City High School. My hope is that all eight grandchildren will be able to benefit from the Christ-centered curriculum at First Lutheran, which is something the public school is unable to offer. I also hope that all eight grandchildren may be able to benefit from any educational activities which Ponta City Public School System is able to offer that First Lutheran is unable to offer. Finally, I hope that they all may graduate from Ponta City High School, as did all three of my children, my wife, and most of my wife's parents. Thank you for your attention. I would encourage you all to vote in favor of the cooperative agreement.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Theron King. Any wishes to speak on that?
My name is Theron King. I've lived in Ponta City since 1985. Only home since my 1985. I have three children. All three children attended First Lutheran School. My two youngest children have probably benefited most from this program that we're voting for. Adam started running cross-country with the middle school in sixth grade, and Gordon started running cross-country in eighth grade. My oldest son Kyle was a swimmer, an all-state swimmer at Ponta City High School. Unfortunately, he didn't, they didn't have a swim program for field swimmers, so he went through the Ponta City Sailfish Swim Club and then got into swimming, began swimming with the high school. So all three of my children have really at least had some benefit from it because they got interested in this, in sports, and benefited from, in order to participate with middle school children from other schools in Ponta City. I think it's, I think it's important to recognize that even though we send our, those of us who choose to send our children to private schools still pay taxes. We help support the school system in Ponta City. We don't have any, I don't have any comment too. And we just, I thought that losing school was better for my children because of the Christian-centered teaching and, and, you know, they, they, they celebrate. My oldest son Kyle was top 10 student in the pastor's graduating class. So I think they receive good education, but they also grew emotionally and physically by participating in sports, rather than the eighth-grade year old. So I just would hope that you would consider voting yes to allow this program to continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all. All right. Thank you all. Next, I'm booked to recess regular board meeting, tell the public hearing to the public leaders and make an American parent discuss the presentation of Native American students and education programs. Comment on education programs and review section 2.3 of the board policy in the Native American community relations.
Thank you, Michelle.
Anna, second up.
Nancy Semerchik.
I'm.
Robin Riley.
I'm.
Judy Trup.
I'm.
Anna Rowland. Don Nizam.
Question passed. Please.
Sarah Bell.
Okay.
Sarah Bell, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening to everyone. My name is Sarah Buffalohead though. I'm the Indian Education Director for Ponta City Public Schools. I'm entering into my third year. Cannot believe that, I feel like I was just standing up here for the first time, trembling before I would do. So yeah, three years has flown by, and I have a presentation, because if you know me at all, you know I'm very warm-winded, so I'm really gonna try to stick to the presentation at hand. And I believe when I'm finished with the presentation, we'll open up for questions or open comment. Is that how this will go? Okay, cool. Adam said yes. Boss man said yeah. All right. With our federal funding that we receive for Native American students, which by the way, we have approximately 900 students enrolled in our program. That doesn't mean that we only have 900 Native American students in our district. That means that's, those are families that have gone through the enrollment process to be enrolled in our program to receive services. I estimate that we have closer to about 1,200, maybe even 1,300 to 1,400 students. There are several issues at hand and nothing really that the district can fix or that my program hasn't tried to solve. I raised back from a conference today, actually, my staff and I, we went to the Oklahoma Council of Indian Education Conference today in Tulsa, and I spoke with a director from Edmund Public Schools, and they use a different software than we do. We use Power School, of course, but they, their challenges are the same with enrollment. And essentially what that is, is that when it's, let's say we have a family that moves here from New Mexico, when they go to enroll their student with Power School, there are boxes, ethnicity check boxes that you can check. Some of our families check multiple, like myself, my children are three different races. Some people check the I-box for Indian, and they're not enrolled with the tribe. And then some people don't check the box, and they are enrolled with the tribe. And there's personal reasons for that. They range and they vary, and we won't get into that. But when we pull those numbers off of Power School, let's say we do an ethnicity check, those numbers are gonna be skewed for those reasons. And so we do have more students than what our enrolled with Title VI's. And I think that's important to know. With our federal funding, we have four objectives that we strive to meet, and that is to ensure academic success, increase cultural awareness, increase graduation rates, and decrease dropout rates. Ensuring academic success, the number one way that we do this is through our Title VI teacher assistants. We have five of them. I believe one of them is here this evening. I wanted to recognize him, Mr. Steve Pinsono. Is he in here somewhere? Hello, Steve. He raised back with me to get ears, so not raised, we have a speed limit, but you know. Yeah, so he serves at Garfield and Liberty. And we have four other assistants that, one is at Pohai, one is at East, one is at West, and our, one is at Union. They provide one-on-one assistance to our students, group tutoring. A lot of the things that they do is remedial. Oh, another one just walked in. Hi, Vicky, sorry to pick you on the spot. That's another TA, she's a West. And each of our schools has a Title VI classroom. So this classroom has culturally rich, culturally rich print environment. So tribal art, tribal stories, books written by Native American authors, which is very important. We want Native Americans telling our stories and our histories, not non-Native people. And so those, that indigenous art, that indigenous literature is in our, is in our classrooms. And so our students, we have a roster, and our principals have that roster. Anyone can have that roster that's within the school district. But we can pull students from classes in the elementary schools, and every, the principal kinda gets to set that. Whether they pull the student or the TA goes to them. Most of our schools were able to pull. At the high school, we do it a little different. We don't pull students, but again, we won't get into all that. But our Title VI teacher assistants are the heartbeat of our program. I tell everyone that. They provide the advocacy. They're the ones that are sitting in the IEP meetings. They're the ones that are calling when we have a student that needs a jacket, a student that needs mental health services. We have some students right now that are failing some of their classes, and we come to find out, they just can't see, and no one will take them to the doctor. So we're not actually working right now with the Vidal Health Center to create some type of documentation where the parent can sign, like a waiver, and the tribe will come and take that student up, take them down there, give them the healthcare that they need, and take care of them that way. So we're still in the weeds of that. I'm not making any promises there, but that's what we mean when we talk about advocacy. Accountability, the TAs make five weekly communications a week. So that could be a house visit, that could be email, calling on the phone, face-to-face. Connectivity is very important in tribal communities, and so we strive to do that every week. And then the integration of culture and education. We provide monthly newsletters to all of the schools. There are, you'll see this little guy here in the classroom. We have tribal language that's integrated. We do not have a Title VI curriculum. Someone had asked me about that. We don't have a Title VI curriculum, but it's definitely a goal for the future. And this is something I've been harping on for two years, promising, and the MOU was finally created with the district. I really want to thank you guys for being so receptive to all my crazy ideas. The board has been so, so supportive of Indian education, and this is a big one. We have a desperate need for more mental health services for our students, culturally competent mental health services for our students. And the Ponta Tribe has graciously offered to provide a salary and licensed professional counselor for our Title VI students onsite. That removes that transportation barrier. It just provides more services to our students. We had someone right at the finish line, and things fell through in negotiations. So we are back sharing that. I actually made some contact at the conference today on a state level. I'm hoping that we can get the word out to more corners of Oklahoma to have that person here. And then lastly, I'll try not to talk too much about the Native American Heritage Club, but we launched, relaunched that my first year here, and I felt the need to launch this club because Betsy Easley at the high school had shared an article, and that has never left me. Connection is my favorite word. Connection is linked to higher academic outcomes. And basically what that means is we were built for community, and we need community. And so our students have a place to come. They have somewhere that they feel like they belong, that they're seen, and we're starting to see positive effects from that. Another objective is to increase cultural awareness. These are some of the ways that we do this. Again, I could stand up here for another hour and talk to you guys about the things that we're doing. The club, I talked earlier about a parish environment, cracking projects. We have several students. I do have two students here tonight. I'm so, yeah, I'll try not to get emotional, but I just, I want to recognize them because they're at the high school and they're very involved with our club. And they're why we do it. They know I love them so much. They don't have to be here tonight. Like, how many teenagers are at a board of education meeting, right? They're here. That, that means so much to me. We're doing something right. The club has been such a blessing. And I, again, go on and on. We have Facebook pages checking out. We do stuff kind of bit. Native American Heritage Club just concluded. I'm still recouping from that. We had two successful days of Minnie Cowalow's, where our dancers were able to travel to every school. And our, my predecessor, my teenager, Chris Littlecook, was our MC, and we had a live drum. Record-breaking numbers. Once again, the first year that I was here, we had record-breaking numbers of about 60. Last year was approximately 75-ish to 80. This year, we talked to 100 dancers. So again, not all at one school, not all in one day, but we had over 100 dancers participate. And the coolest part about this is that we didn't have to use transportation because all of our kids, every single child at every school had a family member there. To me, that's by him, right? To me, that's participation, that is a sense of pride. It's just a beautiful thing to see a mom, you know, helping her child with his roach and, and being there and just beaming with pride and seeing their school and walking into their building. And there's just, again, a connectivity there that I'm really happy about. We do field trips. So the main field trip that we do with the students is the fifth grade field trip at the end of every year. And this year, we're doing something a little different. We, I've made some connections with some wonderful people in Tulsa, the American Indian Resource Center, that's what AIRC is. So we're gonna, we're gonna try that out this year. We've gone to the First American Museum in the past. We just recently had Oklahoma City Native American Student Day, and the students were able to get more information about college and careers and things like that. And we have multiple cultural activities throughout the year. Eating, drum making, stickball, TP exhibition, and continual language integration and tribal cooperation. The last two are interchangeable, I feel, increasing graduation rates and decreasing dropout rates. I believe it was Mr. Nizam that asked me last year on the spot, and I do not have an answer, and I am proud to report to you, your question was, "Is it working?" No, 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 I think it was you, Mr. Riley. It was, "Is it working?" Yes. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, but you asked the question, "Is it working?" You know, all these beautiful things that you're sharing, you visit, you know, you're sharing, "Is it working?" And I was like, "Oh, I think so," you know, but numbers talk. And so I've been doing some research. Dr. Hopkins has been really helpful in helping me navigate the state website and pulling my own numbers, looking at my roster. And our graduating class of 23, we had 55 Title VI students, and five were retained. Last year, the school, the graduating class of 24, we had 65 seniors, and we had four not graduate. So I did the numbers there, it's about 5%. So it's steady at 5%. Obviously, we want 100% of our kids to walk the stage. But there are other things, you know. The answer to that is, that's the number is the answer. But I hope that the things I'm sharing with you will also answer that question. So some of the things that we do to increase graduation rates and decrease dropout rates, the club, again, you know, that connectivity, the students feeling like they have a support network. They're coming to school. I have multiple students that we've been tracking their attendance, and they're coming to school now. And that's a beautiful thing for me, you know, trying to remove those barriers. Our Title VI teacher assistants, as I mentioned before, they're the heartbeat of the program. So they provide that advocacy. They're, they're standing outside the classroom when the kid comes out, and, and they're fighting kids in the hallways and saying, "Come on, we're going to class." You know, that, that type of accountability. We have a partnership with the Ponta Tribe to provide internships to all of our students, which is very exciting. We had an increase in internships. I did not get to get that number to you, but I can say that we have an increase in our Native American students participating in internships. We're working on a tribal career day with the Ponta Tribe for spring 2025. We have attended the OSU Indigenous Creepy Day, and we just attended the OU. We've been invited to go to NSU in the spring. We'll see if that pans out. And then, of course, parent involvement. That, that's so important to bring the families in, to make sure that they are a part of that student's education. We can't do it without them. So these are just some pictures of our Title VI teacher assistants. Ms. Michelle there on the left in her orange, Ms. Jean in her ribbon skirt, Ms. Lloyd with the three girls in the middle, Mr. Steve there on the left, Ms. Vicky down there at the bottom meeting. These people are such a joy to work with. They are so kind and patient, and we'll fight the devil for kids. And that's, that's what, that's what we need. That's what seeded some of the best people working in this district. Just some pictures of our club. We do fundraisers. We fundraise at least three to four fundraisers every year to go on an end-of-year trip. We, there at the bottom was Pioneer Tech. We did a college and career fair at Pioneer Tech. Something else that we're really trying to do is increase community involvement for multiple reasons. That's our former Ponta Francis Cathy Headman in the middle. We, uh, community service at the Friendship Feast. In the top left corner, we had a college recruiter come out and talk to the kids. And we had two kids, I'm happy to report, after that came up to me, and they were 3.8, 3.9 students. And no one had ever talked about college with them before, and I had, and it was in one year and out the other. They're both attending college now from this, from this one visit. And then we walk in the homecoming parade every year, and they, there's a huge participation for that. Some pictures of our beautiful babies from Minnie Cowalow. Some pictures of our beautiful babies from Mini Pow Wow 2024. Just wanted to share this. This is why we do it. This is, yeah. They're amazing. My little guy in the middle, this is his first time fancy dancing. And I even learned. I, I wasn't raised in the, in the arena. And so I learn as I go in this job, and, and his mother was sharing with me that he was debuting his regalia and his new dance moves at the Mini Pow Wow, which I thought was really cool. I thought, "Oh, my gosh, we're so honored." But, um, yeah, those are our beautiful kids from, from Mini Pow Wow. These are just a few photos. It took me hours to try to figure out, okay, don't over, like, don't put fifty thousand pictures up there. These are just a few. We partner, tribal partnerships are so important because our funding is very limited. Tribal partnerships is so important. There in the bottom-left corner is Nadia Khan, former Ponka Princess. She is the cultural, I'm gonna mess this title up, cultural... She's in charge of culture and, and the head start. She does that for us as well. She's teaching the language here in this class. There in the middle, I just love this act of solidarity, Native students and non with the red flag, prayer raising awareness for Miss Huma Rana Indigenous people. And then Basket Leaning there in the corner. And then we had our students come in for regalia and act as readers at West. A few mornings now, so did that at East. And lots of, lots of character building happening here. Not just sharing our culture, but also like the courage to do that and to share this part of yourself. So just a few photos for Native American Heritage Month. These are some pictures from our TP exhibition. Yes, you're in. Just some pictures, again, Chris Little Cook. He was kind enough to put the TP up on the south lawn of Ho High a couple weeks ago, and our students were able to come in. And we just shared a little bit with them, you know? We still live in TP's. Most of us know we don't. But it does act as a church for, for our people and the different uses for the TP. I talked a little bit earlier about partnerships. These are some pictures of Ponka Tribe there in the corner. And the Wai Eagle Health Center there on the bottom-left provided T-shirts for all of the Title VI students and the principals. And I just thought that was really, like, such a beautiful gesture. We have a lot of kids that are learning their heritage, that don't have a tribal T-shirt, that know they're from a tribe, but don't know much about it. And so this kind of was a way for them to connect with their heritage. Ms. Jana Bat there in the middle, she's a Philip sixty-six. They are increasingly becoming involved with, with our program as well. And then Grace Books there in the corner donated over a hundred books that I was able to put in classrooms there at the high school for the different subjects. And then there, it was a Thunder Game. Our club was supposed to fundraise for this. Native Connections from the Ponka Tribe contacted us and said, "We would like to pay your kids tickets. We would like to pay for them a fancy charter, and we would like to pay them to be able to go to Gracopolis and have some pizza and some arcade time." And some of our kids had, had never been into a Thunder Game. So it was, it was a really cool experience that we had last. So grateful for our partnerships. Some goals for the future would be, obviously, right? Increase funding. If we could have some more funding, we could put a teacher assistant at every single school. With the limited federal funding that we have, which I do want to inform you guys, the way we receive that funding is, is that enrollment form. It's called a 506 form. So if we have a student that, and our principals have become increasingly more cooperative with this just because we're talking more and asking more questions. But the more, the more we can have in our program, the more money that we'll receive. So you can imagine, I would love to get to that twelve-hundred mark so that we can hire more TAs. There is grant funding out there, but it's very hard to find for public schools. Most of those grants, that grant funding is going to be directed towards tribes. I am still looking, I'm not giving up. I would like to create a Title VI curriculum for, for our school district. More visitors, more training, more trips. I would like to enhance enrollment process. Again, that's something that's a work in progress. Betty Lynn with the district has been amazing in helping us. We've created a Blue Starburst on a Power School website. And so now what that Blue Starburst indicates is this student is, is a Title VI student. It helps the teacher identify the student. It helps me with record-keeping. So we're, it's a work in progress. Something that has been coming up in recent days, like days, Mr. Shelton reached out to me about a possible Native American Studies class at East. And Mr. McCormick reached out to me from Ho High wanting to provide a possible elective class in the spring or next fall. And the three of us have been kind of collaborating and looking at different things and how those meet academic standards and things like that. I feel like we're getting closer and closer to that happening, which I'm really excited about. Culturally competent onsite behavioral health. Again, I mentioned that earlier. The job site, the job posting is out there. We're hoping someone comes. It's a dream job to me. I, I can't, I don't know why we haven't found anybody yet. A language integration garden, Native American Youth Language Fair, that is happening in April. We will submit our application in January. And essentially what that is, is the University of Oklahoma has a huge competition. Students from all over the, of the state come and compete in different, different artistic mediums. And we will be signing up for that. And then recruitment and retention of Indigenous educators. I think representation is important. And this is really something that I'm kind of talking more to tribes about, possibly looking at and helping me with that, so. That's it. That is, that is all. That's all I have for you guys. If you have any questions for me.
Sure. For years, we've been hearing from your predecessor that the federal funding is just dismal. Is there any improvement in it, or is it still as bad?
It's still, it's the lowest funding I've ever worked with. And, and what I calculated it at is if you did it a per-head amount, it's about two-hundred-and-twenty dollars a kid-ish. So our funding, we said, I think, two-twelve, I remember if that writes out right, two-two-twelve, two-fourteen, something like that. That takes care of six salaries and fringe. We have about four-thousand dollars in supplies a year, two-thousand a year for field trips, two-thousand a year for visitors. I mean, it's, it's small. And the only way we'll increase that amount, obviously, legislation would be great if they would look our way and say, "A, we're gonna increase that per-head amount", but the way that we would do that boots on the ground would be to increase our enrollment of our students with the Title VI form. I think, I think the future, I will tell you this as long as I'm here, the future for me would be increased tribal partnerships, which are already happening, are already happening. And, and the future is very bright for that. But also, like I mentioned earlier, grant funding. It's just that, that's been the way it ordered to come by. I think tribal, tribal partners are ready. Like, they, they want to, they just, they just haven't been asked, so.
Anyways, I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like you're doing a lot.
Thank you.
And we really care about your students' work.
And we really work, I need attention, our computer didn't help. That's why we had a hack to you the whole time. We were watching your presentation.
I did not notice. Great job, sis. Thank you.
You know, I taught, I taught Lincoln for years, and I always enjoyed when the answer was kind. And we were lucky. Sometimes we get a few nights a year.
Yeah.
And that was great. And that's, so.
It's, um, my staff will tell you, I don't sleep very well those two days because I'm looking at it from an administrator standpoint. So I'm like standing up high, and I'm like counting heads. I'm seeing kids and families dart, and I'm seeing cars pull out. And I'm just like trying to manage the chaos. I, I took a little bit more time this year to enjoy it, but I don't know how we pull it off. I mean, a hundred kids and all that regalia, and it's not cheap. The families are just crazy.
That's a lot of them.
And they, they're in and out. Yeah. Yeah, I did also, I'm sorry, I apologize to you, but I did want to introduce to you and acknowledge, we have, is it just one? Two, we have two Indian Parent Committee members here this evening. The Chairman, Cher Kipses, is here. Danny, I'm sorry, Danny's a member. Danny, Danny Kipsa and Cody Pan, please, am I forgetting? But yeah, they, they're here as well tonight. So we have a lot, a lot of representation and, um...
I really appreciate you, Cher, for inviting me to come sit in on your GIC's meetings and be able to add value to that and be able to be a listener. And I really enjoy it. It's just really good to know everybody and just have everybody here tonight. And I'm just very nice.
She's referring to our policies. It states that a board member has to be present at the Indian Parent Committee meetings, and those have to be held at least quarterly. This Indian Parent Committee is very, uh, very, very active. And we meet every month, actually, but Ms. Anna joins us at least at the quarterly meetings. Our next one is on the fifteenth, so.
Good to, thank you.
Thank you.
Need to hold a turn in your session.
Don Isom.
Hi.
Judy Truitt.
One.
Anna Rollins.
Hi.
Aunt Simershi.
Hi.
Robin Riley.
Hi.
Superintendent's Board.
Oh, right.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Were we allowed to ask questions or pardon the Native American committee? Or speak on anything?
Sure, you can ask. Do you want?
Got to catch up.
No.
I just had a little bit of concerns. My name is Kayla Deliar. I'm a Ponka Child Youth Director from Ponka Child, Oklahoma. And my program, we specify in anti-bullying after-school programs, things along those lines. I have picked up kids from school, and they come down to my Native American language classes. I love to do homework and things like that. My main concern is, just from what I observe from my kids, there's a big barrier, in my opinion, with the computers. A lot of the times, the kids break them, and there's already a funding issue. The kids don't, parents sometimes don't have the twenty-five bucks to keep paying these computers to game with the kids. I understand kids shouldn't be breaking, but they're kids. You know, they throw their bags around and things like that. And I think the main issue is these kids need more of a human interaction, not just staring at a computer and listening to a PowerPoint. I had two examples for my kids just last week. And they were like, I was like, "So what are you learning in school? You know, what, you know, why I'm having issues with this?" I said, "Okay, well, what's the issue?" And they're like, "Well, he just tells us to read this chapter, and then we just read it in class, and that's it." I said, "If you don't raise your hand and ask questions, you know, this is teaching PowerPoint, and what's the position?" He said, "Well, he tells us the PowerPoint's on our Google Classroom, to read it and read our textbook and then do the paper." And so that's just one example. I think these kids need more human interactions. Because me, personally, I went Poncy schools. You know, I had my pros and cons to it, and mostly, you know, I didn't have any issues. I didn't track here, you know? You guys got me to college, I got a scholarship and a major in English. So I appreciate that. But a lot of kids that I teach or I help with didn't have the same life I had. I had supportive parents, they were, you know, they did things for me. I could be successful. You know, so I would say a majority of the children certainly don't have that. So I was very blessed in that, actually. But my main concern is, I think these kids are just missing interactions. Because me, personally, when I went to college, I found out because, you know, I took psychology classes, and, you know, they have, you know, auditory learning, hands-on learning. There's different ways you learn. And so I actually did this test on my kids, and I would say ninety-five percent of them are hands-on learning. So like, when I went to college, you know, when I was learning anatomy, I had to draw pictures and things like that just for me to obtain the information. These kids don't learn just reading a textbook. I can do that. I can sit there and read a paragraph and then learn it like that. That's not me. And I know a majority of the children don't learn like that. So my main concern is, can we, we, is there, is, I know the computers came because of COVID. I understand that, because it's virtual learning and everything's like that. And I know COVID's still here, I understand that. But my main concern is, can we please go back to human interaction? Can we go back to fun? Like, kids learn if you do fun activities, fun science projects, wolf stuff, love. That's how I learn. You know what I mean? I, I, that's how I learned chemistry, and I passed that class a hundred and one. I never thought I could do that. But my teacher blew stuff up, he made it fun, we'd go outside, things on that. I think we need that more for these kids to be successful because they feel dumb, they feel a little, they don't understand what's going on. And they're like, "Well, we're too scared to ask our teachers because they're too scared to speak up, because half the time, they argue, half the time, they get in trouble because they're trying to ask the teacher, you know, 'Hey, I don't like how you teach'. It comes off wrong, so it turns into things that they're just too scared to get in trouble. They're too scared to speak up, which is a regimen that these children have. So that's, that's what I wanted to express to you guys. Just from my, I would say, I serve about fifty children from out there. Thank you.
Yes. Excuse me, could I comment on the Native American thing to you as well? Or just a question directly for the board? When, when I was at Ho High, I'm Gil Sine Flair. I was the Native American College President, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. But it felt like a prison. But how can, how can they make, how can y'all make Ho High, make these other schools less like prisons? Because a lot of these children, that's where they go to when they get out of this school. They go right to prison. A lot of them are in prison right now.
Hi.
Yes, can I speak, please?
Sure.
My name's Tiffany McLeire. My son is Hayden McLeire. He is a Ponka Tribal member. He is a president, class president of the senior class this year.
Yeah, I don't know Hayden. He's a good kid.
Just so you know that. I want to give kudos to Sarah Bell this evening. This is hard for me. I work in the public school system. I saw how the Native American children were treated different. Whether anybody up there on that front row wants to believe her, but it does happen. I had a parent reach out to me three weeks ago. Their child had missed fifty-nine classes. Fifty-nine classes. Never once was notified. I find that a problem. Native American students, it's real big. Happens bad at Poncy City High School. I think Sarah Bell's probably gonna do a good job at trying to get that fixed, keep a closer eye on the students, help. Maybe the last principal even will make it better also. But you guys need to help these kids.
I'd thank you for your comments.
I'm fortunate enough that my son is gonna be able to go to college in Nebraska State University, is a Ponka Tribal member, and is also the class president of twenty-four, twenty-five. Because you don't see that very often. And any one of these people here, that are here with this Native American group can tell you that. And I really hope that when my son graduates from college and becomes an educator, that he will come right back here and teach all those little babies from Wai Eagle, from Tonka Wall, and let them know that he cares. Because there's a lot of folks up there that don't.
All right, thank you. All right. All of that, that's, uh, um... Well, it's twenty-twenty-two, the last month, meeting of the month, or the last meeting of the year. And I like to go through a yearly rewind at what we were able to get done the last twelve months as a school district. And we'll just start January. That, if you remember, Rewind the Wheels, we were notified from P sixty-six that we were officially going to receive a million-dollar grant for the equipment and training and tools and staff that we needed to do in our STEM building there. We were able to host a leadership class for the Pumka City Chamber as the day chair for education opportunities in Pumka City. We get an opportunity to take our leadership just since the twenty-four of them across the community, to our private schools, here from our private schools, here from our other community partners on our education services here.
Nobody else does.
Terry Vogel, our elementary curriculum, had a neat opportunity come up from Texas A and N University for a participation in a research group study on the partnership to help increase elementary literacy rates and scores. And our district signed up to participate in that. It was free to the taxpayers and free to the districts. And then we also had big-time extracurricular searches going on for looking for a future in the football coach position and softball coach. And then also, we had a couple of snow days thrown in there, so that's always fun for making that decision on that. So hopefully, getting the real truth nicer this coming year. Moving into February, we announced our new football coach. We had a million-dollar donation, official ceremony. We got the keyword before for Zach Phillips from Phillips fifty-six through our new STEM facility. I was able to attend the National Superintendent's Conference where May challenged us about this new theme of AI and how it's coming across educational landscapes and how it's going to transform the future of education and maybe actually the future of everything that we touch. Internally, we launched an investigation to see how we could provide driver's ed opportunities in our community. That was something this district got away from in the last two or three decades. And we wanted to see if that was something that we could bring back, what kind of red tape we need to cross to do that, to be able to bring that service back into the community. We held our ribbon cutting for the STEM, or no, we didn't do that, that was in March. But we were finalizing all the STEM work. And then we were doing something called Planning with Mark Herna. And that was a collaborative effort with Pumka City Development Authority, Northern Oklahoma College, University Center, Pumka City Chamber, Pioneer Tech, about could we do something in the way of creating more workforce opportunities for our students in Pumka City Public Schools? So that when they graduate, they were ready to either make a decision on going to Career Tech for some career skills, going to college, or join the workforce. So we got going on that. Moving into March, we hosted a meeting with Mike Betcher. We hosted ribbon cutting for the STEM facility. We did a ribbon cutting for the baseball facility. We did announce our driver's ed, we were able to get that up and going. We got that out to the public. We hosted our largest job and career fair at Poe High. And I think that was a joint effort with our internship coordinator, Jordan Jackson Rose, and Pumka City Development at the recording. We also had our corral scene with Warner at one of the local casinos. You see a ribbon-cutting picture there, baseball stadium. And the bottom right is a Dominus with Dads. That's not my kid, but I was filling in as a role of a dad at Fort Val on that day. So it was a neat opportunity with Ms. Fisher and the Washington Pre-K to get parent involvement with our youngest Wildcats. In April, Pumka City Public Schools thanks to Judy Truitt, got to host the OSSBA Region Three meeting in our new STEM facility. I found that went really well. We also presented the Twenty Century Club here, local club, about all of our STEM projects and bond projects that we're able to do as a district. Jared Heasport was nominated by Pumka City and selected as one of Oklahoma's top elementary principals at Roosevelt. So that was a statewide search, and she was one of the three finalists in Elementary Principal of the Year. We were very proud of her. We were starting the new HVAC project at the Finarch Building. We named new administrators for East Middle School. We did find us a new softball coach, Gary Freeman. We were able to get on board and get going there. And then Jason had the indoor facility going, Game Musters, you can see up there, the right-hand or left-hand, there's a picture of some underground water detention. There's about a million dollars of water work underneath the dirt at that indoor facility. So lots of high-tech engineering going on to make sure we do not flood the neighborhoods if it rains in the report. In May, we announced a new middle school principal at East. We held our first esports tryouts within our new STEM facility. That was part of the promise to the voters that if we could get this facility going, we would bring in an esports team and join other six A's in Oklahoma to have competitions with our students. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, we had graduation. This was interesting, we were at Roosevelt for a parent meeting and this car broke down and these kids were on their way to graduation. So got out in their gowns and helped push this patron's car off the side of the road there on Highland. Very cool there. Made a new high school principal. We were looking at, as a board, whether or not we thought Pre-K should continue on at that site, or should we send those students back into the building. We were able to hire a new ag instructor as well that replaced our former ag instructor. And then we were working with Integris for the Hope Squad grants, the Integris Boss Alliance Health and moving to the Pumka City market. And we actually presented on the Hope Squad today in Pumka City, Rhode Island, about mental health awareness that we're trying to instill in our secondary kids, six through twelve. Kind of anti-suicide, trying to make sure we're connecting kids with one another. In June, I don't know if you guys remember, this is when we passed the new student communication law or policy in the district that followed the state law that no school in the world you could text or message a student unless it was a district-approved platform. So we had a lot of work to do with that. Jason got an interior of the high school, right at the beginning of the school started. And that's a picture of one of the new housing offices now that we were trying to get done before the start of school. We opened bids for twenty-eight new units at Westman School to replace aging units that were thirty, thirty-five years old in several areas. Concert hall classrooms were underway, the indoor facility, this was a picture of what it looked like in June in the bottom right-hand side. So just a few short months ago, where that facility has come, it's incredible. And then Drives End began, and we had just one car accident in Drives End, and I'm not gonna say who it was. For everyone to say. In July, we kicked off registration with Pumka City Public Schools. We hosted the Learn Herna event with Pioneer Tech, we were able to swing that with our partners there. That was a very transformative, I know Judy Truitt and Anna defended that, that here can talk about the urgency we need to have in serving kids today. And that this whole generation of kids thinks differently, acts differently, and it's up to us to respond differently.
Anybody that you want to maybe get a second look at that over at NOC, the grant that I'm working for, we, or having him come on here, eight?
This coming year, so he'll be back, he loves Pumka, K County. So, NOC loved it so much, they were able to write a grant and give it back. He's phenomenal, so. We had secondary principals attend the NASSP, that was a part of the delegation there at that conference there. We started a community eligibility study, and Jeff didn't came and presented on that and how he's gonna keep us in the black and not be a nominal runner next and that Pumka City Public Schools is in good hands and going in a good direction in child nutrition. Obviously, Jennifer and her team and our whole administrative team was hiring, we were looking to fill sixteen spots before the start of school. And then there was a board member that said maybe an all-staff breakfast would be a good idea. So we started planning what that would look like and how that might work in August. And we made it. First back-to-school breakfast in two decades as we got that kickoff. I thought that was a phenomenal event as we welcomed support and certified staff all at the same time and several community partners, other government organizations, government leaders, elected officials, to show how proud we are of our school district. I think my most fun part of that was serving the cinnamon holes in the morning. That was a lot of fun. We had our first pitch in ribbon cutting at softball. Nancy did a good job throwing that out there. I think it was a strike. We, one of the other projects we got done this summer, really, that's not a flashy project, but we had a new intercoms and a bell system at the high school that replaced the nineteen-eighty bell system that we had, that you had to have one of those mail-order degrees to be able to change the knobs and tubes to switch the time from ringing the one eight to five to eight-ten. And so for our high school up till now, we can have intercoms throughout the whole high school campus, which is very nice, very nice for our kids and our staff. Our internship program, like you guys have heard, last year was going on Game Musters, it still is. Jordan presented at the OSSBA presentation conference. As a result of that, Yukon Public Schools and Lawton Public Schools have visited Pumka City Public Schools to mirror what we're doing, to try and make that happen in their communities. So that was phenomenal. This, this art school felt different. We had donations from Starbucks, HGO, banks, high partners, anyone that said, what can we do to help get school started for you all and get your teachers going and the kids going? It was, it's just been very overwhelming elements of community rally around our school district. In this board, you guys tackled dress code, you tackled cell phones, and all that fun stuff and policies. In August. It's crazy, but it's just amazing how much stuff we tried to tackle when counting years. Yep?
That student in the middle with his hair hanging out, yeah? The one that said the crisscross?
Oh, yeah, right. That's a Pre-K kid sitting on the first base stool in my former kid's Pre-K class. So it was fun to sit in there, crisscross.
You blended right in that one.
Yeah. He was a little big, ugly being a Pre-K classroom, but hopefully he knows. September, we found out we've had the host softball regionals for the first time in two decades. That was exciting. I thought Coach Freeman did a great job. We started hosting our first esports competitions. We hosted more and less more in Pumka City. We, Jennifer and I participated in a lieutenant governor meeting with Matt Pennell. As a result of that meeting, he challenged us to look at childcare initiatives and how we serve more central Oklahoma. So he's created more workforce, thank you for that. KOCO interview, it's rare that they come up interviewing on good things, but they did. They wanted to know what we were doing with this Hope Squad grant and how we intended to help kids with mental health in our public schools. So that's, that was a wonderful opportunity there. We are working, our team diligently on how do we remove barriers to kids' education? And we've been engaging in discussions with NOC on how we can get kids more in current enrollment opportunities and the University Center Foundation on how we can get more scholarship opportunities, working through that. We had it hosted at Poe High Hall of Fame, that was a phenomenal evening. Because this is our first STEM consortium meeting. One of our promises to the voters when we got that STEM building was open was we wanted to invite the businesses in to help guide our instruction and make sure that we're planning, teaching kids the essential skills they need to succeed in a local workforce. So we had our first meeting there. And then we attended our, myself and Erica attended the PCDA Strategic Planning Retreats, where we got to hear economic initiatives from our business community on where they thought the direction of our community should be going as far as manufacturing or industry, technology, housing, retail. A lot of good stuff that the school probably need to have inside knowledge of knowing. October, hosted our softball regionals. We had to bring in extra stands, so Jason and his team managed to bring in extra stands to help accommodate the crowds that we had. I attended another conference, and guess what the topic was? Artificial intelligence. And it was a full day of just artificial intelligence and what San Diego Public Schools has in the way of that. If you've read my memos from October to today, you've seen lots of different threads about AI, different tools that I've given to principals or try to share with principals that utilize. And I know you and board members have utilized some of those tools as well, Matt. We hosted P sixty-six corporate team. This was the team from Houston that wanted to see the million dollars and what it was doing and where it was going. Two comments that came from that. One said, I wish our schools in Houston were as nice as this school did in the STEM facility. And number two said, I'll be enrolling so we can take their kids. So I thought those were great comments. So they were very pleased with what we're trying to do in the way of STEM and utilizing their funds wisely. High school made office ribbon cutting, we cut the ribbon there. Jennifer and Erica and I went to Enid to visit their childcare facilities and their two elementary schools and see how Enid Public Schools serves their community. And I participated in a training through OSSBA called Superintendent as CEO to try to give more business principles and women reading schools and how this can translate into an educational world. So that was excellent. November kicked us off. Look, there's Erica, she's presenting to the RSCB Bank Board of Directors. So we started November with, literally the day before the general election, Senator Langford meeting, where he talked about goals, really kind of laid out the roadmap if the Republicans won or the Democrats won, and what to expect from his office and moving forward. Jason, Joe and I are meeting with Sonic, the new owners of the Sonics here in town, and what they'd like to see happen in Pumka City Public Schools if they were able to make a financial contribution. That's going positively. Collinsville, Amy, Terry and I went on the rainiest day of the school year to Collinsville to visit their Atlas Classroom, that's a therapeutic classroom for their elementary kids, to see if that's a service we could provide to our community here. This board believed in it. We have opened and created the position, we have yet to find a qualified applicant that we think would do a phenomenal job. So we are still keeping our fingers crossed and trying to recruit for that position actively. We did hire a new internship coordinator. Jordan Jackson did such a great job presenting on our statewide tour of how great Pumka City Public Schools was. Statewide agency fluffed her out of Pumka City. But that's all right, we're gonna keep our people out there. We want to keep them out there and talking about the great things we're doing for our kids in our community. Personally, I met with Senator Pew, he's the state senator over the Education Committee, and talked about what his goals are for the upcoming spring and some of the challenges we face with the public school. It wasn't just me, but a hundred other superintendents met with me as well. So it was good, I was with the Jinx Superintendent and the Lawton Superintendent, and we shared out from a six-day perspective what we could see happen, or some of the challenges we face from a six-day standpoint. Water. Elementary principal Casey Wilson at the Pre-K Center went and toured the Norman Public School System to talk about intergenerational Pre-K. If you're not familiar with that, that is where you set up a Pre-K classroom inside of a nursing home facility. So there's a partnership with the nursing home and the Pre-K Center that they do this in Stillwater and Norman, and I think it's a phenomenal idea. And I think that our district should too consider how we can do something like that in Pumka City where we get our Pre-Kers around, they call them their friends, their neighborhood friends, and it's a neat deal. In Stillwater, it's a lottery because they had such an overwhelming demand for parents wanting their kids to go to that. So I'd like to see us explore that. And then the bottom picture, we hosted the National Guard, one of our forty-fifth Governor's Band. I would say almost near Salado, that concert hall, on lower level, we didn't open it without any, but it was a phenomenal deal that was put on by the Poe High Hall of Fame and some excellent local individuals for Veterans Day, so it was a great deal for us. So, December twenty-three goals, I know this says December twenty-three, this is what I pitched to you last year, that I really encouraged our staff to do, so I just wanted to go through and be innocent of transparency to say we got the job done, or I didn't get the job done. So you can remember that. Finishing strong, that was my message last year, and that's the same message that I did with our teachers and principals this year. Last year at this time, we had some issues with scheduling, with too many, it felt like we had too many events smashed into a short timeframe. It caused a lot of stress on parents, a lot of stress on students, and it really kind of took us way from our formation of which is provide educational opportunities for kids. So that one, finishing strong, that's gonna be a goal for this year as well, but we've kind of made some scheduling tweaks to try to improve on that this year. Our twenty-twenty-four PCPS New Year's resolution was academic improvement, and we had to get to some critical positions, staff, bus drivers and the bus mechanic, you know, that was one that we didn't get as well as I'd like it to. Assistant team or resident coach, we're still looking for one. But we did get us a great football coach. We were able to sass French at the high school. One of the things that I challenged Dr. Hawkins and our high school principal at the time was, do we need to look at a Native American language as a foreign language class? And explore that. The problem is just finding a certified instructor that can teach that and get that. But it was something we explored to see what kind of languages we need to provide. It just so happened we had a teacher that was started certified in French that stepped up and was able to be that special education teacher. We definitely need more of those, and that's still holds true today. So I just thought that would be interesting. And then child nutrition staff, Jeff needs staff, our public staff, so I think about fifteen, who can will, moving forward. So our goals for this year, you know, in my newsletter, I send a newsletter each week, it's encouraging principals and teachers, there's a tendency to want to let off the gas or to pop in that Christmas Carol movie and phone it in for a few days. And it's really, how can we really squeeze the last bit of these fifteen days between Thanksgiving and Christmas for academic improvement? One thing my team is doing from central office is we are descending on every site for comprehensive data review, where they're presenting on academic outcomes, student behaviors, student attendance, teacher performance, any indicators that they have as evidence that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. It's been very enlightening, we've had four of them so far. We've got six planned this week, and then we'll wrap them up next, next week as well across there. So those are our goals for twenty-twenty-four and what to expect in twenty-twenty-five. You know, one thing that we're looking at is we've got a number, a large number of emergency certified, dad junk certified instructors. So we've got to continually look at how we're allocating the precious resources that we have in C staff development. Right now, about eighty-five percent of our budget is spent on personnel costs, so that that fund is a little smaller than I'd like it to be. But we've got some opportunities that I think are starting to show during these data reviews that we have some needs that you as a ward and myself as superintendent, we can make sure that we're prioritizing where we think we can get the most bang for our buck.
Is staff development and more pedagogy of teaching or classroom management for us?
Well, we're finding a little bit of both. I'd say right now, classroom management is bubbling to the top, that we've got some teachers that are really strong in it, and then these new teachers- And then these new teachers, I feel like, well, no, I wouldn't say new teachers. I just think that makes some expectations. We're not adapting with the kids as much as I think we should be adapting and working there. Curriculum goals. You know, we got IXL, this word through IXL software package that would track activity growth. We are big believers in growing our kids. And we needed a software program in secondary that could do that. IXL did. And in SAW, which is the program we've had long invested in, is also being used to help track that. Now, last week, or last month, I'm sorry, last week. Last month, I showed you our score report cards and we weren't too happy with them. And this is a big chart and I'm sure college can print it or bake it in the newspaper. But I, I think there's a story to be told here that I didn't do a fair enough job explaining last month in our score report card. Academic achievement is a snapshot indicator of where students are on any given day. Our district and myself, I believe in academic growth. Where are you taking a kid, where are you in relationship with them by the time they graduate in May or leave their class in May? You should grow them in academic year plus some. That should be the goal of every staff person in our district. One of the things that I think that this chart helps tell is this tracks our grade three through eight achievement over the last five years. And the far right bar is showing how many of our students scored proficient and advanced in English language arts in Pulp City Public Schools. So it goes back to two thousand seven, eighteen, eighteen. It does not include twenty twenty-one. Anyone know why?
COVID.
COVID. We didn't take state tests during COVID, so there's no data for that. This is Oklahoma State testing. But this shows what we did last year in the last twelve or last school year by May. You can see that far right dark bar in each of those clusters, how many of our students scored proficient and advanced. So you can see, we took ahead during COVID and learning loss was a legit thing. But I, I'm encouraged and I hope our principals and you as a ward in our community that we are taking the right steps. We are emphasizing academic learning and that, you know, it's, it's starting to show in our data. So now, this is percent below basic. That's the lowest performing. And this one, you want the bars to decrease. You want fewer kids scoring percent below basic. You can see we still have some work in some grade levels there. Grade six, grade eight, for example. You want those to be smaller than the subsequent year because that would show that fewer of your students are scoring below basic there.
Looks like we've got a lot of work in eighth grade.
And you'll see math too. This is percent proficient and advanced. This one, you're going to want the bars to be bigger on the right for each cluster. We were still not there caught up in some grade levels what we were pre-COVID. But I think we're telling the story that we're moving there. We're getting in that direction.
There's something wrong. So worried.
But it's something we are tackling in our data review. Go on, you're, the data doesn't lie, right? And in football, we always had the tape that lied after you filmed something. Now, this one, again, you want the bar to be decreasing, but you can see that this is percent below basic in our math scores across the district as we move on there. But Don, I think you were right. Eighth grade, we got some work to do.
It's such a pivotal year. I mean, if you think about the COVID and all those things too, there was real trauma going on during those times.
Yeah.
You know, when those kids were missing that. They were missing a real important end of elementary grade. Have you learned a lot in business?
Well, I've learned that eighth grade is every year. That's eighth grade every year, so.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Right. So it's not that, they wouldn't be the state graders or state graders. So I think some of that, if, you know, are we teaching to the right standards? Are we teaching to the right rigor level? You know, we have some academic gun tactics to do at the grade eight for certain. And I think Mr. Shelton so far has been up to the task to get that done. It's not something we haven't identified and sharpened upon. I told you at the board election, we had five candidate filing last week. For Don Newsom's seat for the first time in twenty-five years, that seat's going to be open to an election. We had two candidates filed, Sean Stanton and Joe Bayden. And they both resigned and were fine. Since there's only two candidates, the election is on April first. There is a February election or primary had there been more than two candidates. But since there's only two candidates, it will be on April first. So it is April Fool's Day. I'm not kidding. It is April first. The winner will be sworn in on the regular, either if we have an emergency board meeting or a special board meeting before the regularly scheduled one, they would be sworn in during that one. But if we have a normal board meeting, I can't predict what was going to happen in April. But if it's Paul's calendar, they will be sworn in at the April fourteenth board meeting at six P M. And my team and the imagery team will be doing a V O E orientation. It's literally a hundred and thirty-some slides that talk about all the district operations, broken down by departments, broken down by budget, broken down by line item. Everything that's going on in Pulp City Public Schools will, that will occur the week of April seventh. So little misconception, I've already been asked. One person said, "I cannot vote because I don't live inside Pulp City city limits." And that is not the case. If you live in the Pulp City School District, you can vote in this election. This will be confusing though, because there is a municipal race, a municipal race for mayor. And they cannot vote if they don't live in city limits for mayor. And that one is in February. And if there is not a candidate that receives fifty plus one percent votes, then there, then there is an April first election as well.
One vote.
One vote over fifty percent. Yeah, one vote over fifty percent. I said that home. So, so it could be a little confusing come election time if people are like, "Oh, I don't know if I can vote for that one or this one." Now, the other thing is, is I was told, well, I live on the east side of town. I cannot vote in this school because it's only for Ward five. No, anyone in the Pulp City Public School District can vote in this election. Now, if you live in the McCord School District, you can't vote. Sorry. But if you live in the Pulp City Public School District, you can vote for one of the two candidates, Sean Stanton or Jill Bay. Any questions about the election? Any questions for?
You did tell him it's five years.
It is a five-year term. Not twenty-five, five years. You just signed up five times.
Of course. And Don, I'm the oldest member. Well, I'm. I've been on this member for longest, but I've been on the longest on this survey.
Any questions for me as we move forward? Thank you. How was she? He was on the picture.
Yeah, he has his picture on there.
Well, I was trying to say with two percent.
We had first in five or six years perfect score on the A P T test.
I'm going to ask one more.
Yeah, to Jackson sheets. Had his picture.
Yeah, he was with his.
Yeah, on the right hand side.
All right, next item will be consent agenda. A motion required for the approval of the consent agenda's president or its members tonight. I recall the specific vote on any and all items listed on consent agenda.
First, I have a motion to approve all the consent agenda.
I was going to say it's the first time that I was confused.
Gosh, what is the problem?
I'll second that.
All right, second item.
Get quick for a change.
Yeah.
No discussion then. Call book, please.
Don Nissen.
Hi.
Anna Rowland.
Hi.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Hi.
Robin Riley.
Hi.
Judy Truitt.
Hi.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item will be action items. Consider take action on the volume of district's financial reports. Light meeting, or seeing nice.
It's going to be light for one.
Yes. Didn't pretty hecky. Lack of motion to approve this item.
I make a motion to approve out of step. It's been tired.
Second, my duty. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Seven point one.
Yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
Robin Riley.
Hi.
Don Newsom.
Hi.
Judy Truitt.
Hi.
Anna Rowland. Nancy Zimmerstein.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item will be number two. Consider take action on approved. Consider take action on to approve or not approve the divisions policy four point four dash one point zero dash graduation requirements and grades classifications as presented to the board in the November eleventh twenty twenty four board meeting.
Motion to approve. Well, with the commentary, to say thank you to Dr. Hawkins and everyone for permitting and all that. Love it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Anna Rowland. Don Nissen.
Hi.
Judy Truitt.
Hi.
Nancy Zimmerstein. Robin Riley.
Hi.
Motion passed. Next item will be number three. Consider take action on amendment guaranteed maximum prize to D and P for the P sixty-six STEM Academy exterior rooms projects submitted by Rex Cockriss. Motion to approve this item.
I'm willing to approve it.
Thank you, Robin. Get up second. Nancy. Any other discussion? None? Roll call?
I, I have a.
Oh, question.
Um, yeah, on this is still out of that fund.
Yes.
And then what contingencies are we expecting? Or what's the contractor's contingency plan?
It's a weak environment, any unseen budget.
Contractor contingencies for any unseen items. We felt that we would add these brick columns to our fencing structure outside the STEM building to bring in the campus, campus look and theme. At this time, we only have one bid from a masonry contractor. And so we felt it would be better if we approved that in contingency as opposed to approving one bid for, for that. Because we need to get multiple bids for all the projects we're doing. So right now, that's the best way now we can put it out for bid and get, get some quotes back for that.
And this is the last that we're looking at, and the rest that can use for a book then?
Yes. Any unseen contingency comes back to, to the district.
That's mine. That's all I have, Don.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Judy Truitt. Robin Riley.
Hi.
Nancy Zimmerstein. Don Newsom.
Hi.
Anna Rowland.
Hi.
Motion passed. Next item will be four. Consider take action to approve or not approve application for conducting, conducting the pilot cooperative activities program between Pulp City Public Schools and first living school.
Can I talk on that, Don?
Yes, you can.
Okay. First, I do appreciate the public coming to speak, their mind on it. I think that they're absolutely right. We have some great kids in our community. And I wish I had the resources that I can provide to all of them to have an awesome opportunity in Pulp City Public Schools. Secondly, it's nice to be wanted, you know, that we have outstanding extracurriculars that people want to be a part of. I think that as part of our mission as educators, that extracurriculars are exactly that, extra to the school day. And as your superintendent, it's my job and responsibility to ensure that public schools provide equitable opportunities for all students. So with that, I can expand on it and reasons if we need to, but I recommend that we do not approve this.
Do you want to make the motion for, to the board to discuss, right before we can discuss the board?
Excuse me, can I see?
No.
Sorry, please.
I just make a motion to discuss not more or answer the question. So except for. Just some questions, I guess, Adam, for you really before we decide. You said that you sort of provide the resources. So on some of the, what's the calculated financial impact of the co-op? And does, would, would there be cost sharing with this?
I can only speak on the past. We've never done a cost sharing as part of it. Our insurance, you know, we, we bring them on and our insurance covers them on, on transportation. I, I was speaking more on the resources, uh, personnel side of it. You know, we have limited staffing as it, as it is. We have limited spots for certain extracurriculars in our district. And as your superintendent, I would think we would want to preserve those spots for public school kids that are part of our day-to-day rules, day-to-day policies, day-to-day school culture. You know, one thing that I talked about when I was hired last year was an emphasis on school culture. And I, I think an unintended consequence of approving the co-op would be if we have private school students taking spots of public schools' kids, what kind of division does that create on our team? I, I think the, the whole purpose of an extracurricular is just an extension of creating school pride and being involved in your public school day-to-day. And I, I would like to see this more maintained.
I'd just like to say, all kids do matter. So I don't think the cognitive field matters a thing. It's just, that's my personal, I'm sure everybody else is pleased with that as well. I understand the reasoning of the, they were wanting to come. And I also understand our, either my personal reasoning or your personal.
Do you, we can, you know, like, yes, there is.
I have a question. Kind of money, staffing, and you just.
I'm really interested in this district. I'm sure I do know some of the, some of the costs in the district. So there has to be some, I mean, without having cost sharing, how does it affect our, or how would a co-op affect our district budget, including, you know, coaching, facilities, transportation expenses? And then the public school taxpayers fully funding the program, you know? And then I, I, if I understand that this school in particular, I don't know if all of our private schools in town are good, but I know this school in particular requires their, their people who would apply before they can, before they can fill out an application, they have to do the tax credit factors. And so to me, that would be almost double the pay. And if I was, if, if that would be a double dip on my, on my, I can see that it's going to be a double dip.
What was the cost analysis?
How will we further subsidize?
The cost analysis would be hard. It'd be very subjective to each sport, you know? An esports participant or what's the, a student council participant is different than a football participant or what's involved in wrestling. I mean, we are committed with the resources we receive to provide an education for our public school students. And as public schools, we are tasked to create academics and social and extracurricular opportunities for our kids. And I think we do a great job of leveraging those resources to make that happen. I have no qualms with what a parent chooses to do with their education. As your superintendent, I am here to protect your public school students, the students that don't have the voice, that can speak up, that would like to participate. I think we need to do everything in our power to make sure that they have as much opportunity as possible.
Don, I have a question.
Yes, problem.
Is this just for track or is this for all sports? The commentary reads that it is just for track.
I mean, that's what the application says, yes.
It is just for track.
Yeah.
For the next calendar year.
Yes, yes.
For this.
And then whatever the board decides to do, if, if you approve it, then we can roll with it.
Spring sports.
Or if you don't, I feel like.
Or wouldn't we have to vote on it each and every sport, every?
It depends on what the application says. If the application says Irish sport, then the S is more. If it got to the agenda, it would have to be voted.
Because during COVID, we didn't bring this to any of you doing this.
But the way it reads, this is just track for this.
That's correct.
This spring, this spring.
But what I'm saying is that we don't have to do it every single time because during the COVID time, we just didn't do it because of. Thank you. Remember that. So you don't have to put it on each of them.
No, but, but will it automatically, if we approve it, will it automatically be approved for next year? Or if we don't approve it?
No, you have to approve it in.
Yeah, because that's what we're talking about. Yeah, we have to do that every year.
And they would be the responsible.
This is just this spring for track only.
Yes.
Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
And have we reviewed the OSSI guidelines and district policies to like make sure that all compliant on all of those things? Regulations on the public-private partnerships and all that? Like what, what is that, you know? And then who's overseeing the co-op? How do we make sure that they're, that both schools are adhering to the same standards? And I mean, there's a lot that's different for compliance standards for public schools than there is, I think. I would agree. I mean, there's just a lot.
With, with co-ops, it, it comes two-fold. You have co-ops on the junior high level and you have co-ops in the high school level. Co-ops in the high school level, you can take a lot of the. Co-ops in the high school level, you can take one of those at that A D M for your sport so you can increase your count numbers. So meaning, for example, if you're six eight two in football, it could go up to six eight one because you take that full school's enrollment. The process to do the co-op is is initially the sending school, which would be First Lutheran. Sending kids are doing an application with Palm City Public Schools, so they put that to us. And then once that application is received, then it's determined to present it to the school board education. So prior to submitting that application, we have to have the board approval, local board approval before we submit it to the, upon the secondary school. That should be the association. After that fact, then then the co-op agreement can go into effect and the students can start to participate. Um, what what it does is, um, it allows them to participate. Um, every application for whether that's fall or winter sports, that approval process has to be done prior to August fifteenth every year. So the local school board has to approve and then it's got to be submitted to the O S S A. Same thing for all spring sports. That'll have to be finalized and submitted before January fifteenth. That is the deadline. Um, so normal processes have been followed. It right now is to the point of whether the board chooses to approve or disapprove of this cooperative agreement. Does does that answer your question?
It did, um, it answered on that for track, uh, and on this one particularly, but who will oversee this co-op and how do we ensure that both of them are here for all these candidates?
So who will receive the co-op and how do we ensure every time?
Yeah, who oversees it?
So so who receives a co-op? We are responsible as a host school for any cooperative that students participate. Um, so that all the schedules, we're responsible for scheduling, we're responsible for doing all the funerary activities, we're responsible for transportation, uh, equipment, uniforms of all kinds. Um, and then we are also responsible for creating a mechanism for obtaining grades that we're in compliance with eligibility standards. Um, so that way our school doesn't get in any kind of violation with the O S S A.
Jason, since I don't think anyone on the board has seen this application, could you explain it a little bit? Because the way I read it, this is strictly for track, which we've also had a lot of discussions about, that we won't set up C C P S student now, et cetera, only for this spring period. Is that, is that a true statement?
So each.
This application, because we have not seen it.
Each act, each activity has has to have an application. So if that's for track, there needs to be an application for track.
So that is, that is the question. Is this application just for track?
Just for, you're going to put one activity per application. So if it's tennis or if it's golf, there has to be, there has to be separate applications. No, no, no. The spring sports are due January.
For the what?
Spring, spring activities are due January fifteenth.
Right. But it still takes a separate one for each.
For each one, and and no two schools can co-opt in the same activity.
Right, but but I think back to Hannah's question, are there requirements, have they been specified in this particular application? For instance, will a P C P S kid have to set out if a Lutheran kid beats them out? Or is it up to the coaches? I mean, those are, those are the questions I think that that you need to know.
No, I I don't think that's been specified. Um, I do know that our rule has been if we do a tryout in the junior high school, we're not going to call it an ass. That's that's been our practice. Um, if there hasn't been a tryout, then we we would entangle in.
Have we done tryouts in the past for track?
Well, I'm glad you're talking about that in a historical context because I'm still kind of the new, I'm going to know historically, what have we done for co-ops in the district? And how we may have worked on it. And, I mean, you were the A D before, so you can provide some context and applications and some of that.
Yeah, I've got two schools that want to.
Right, is there a strain? That's what I was gonna say. Is a, is a physical strain on your staff? Have you noticed the coach is a little harder time whenever they do those things? Or does the coach come to you first and then say, this is what I want to do? I've heard a lot about building programs and things like that. I'm not sure. I I.
It it depends. I mean, it it really does depend. Um, but it's not very often that I've had a coach just come champion to to entertain a cooperative agreement.
And you think, I'm sorry. Do you think that this, like, what percentage of the private school students typically do transfer to our high school? And and would this co-op significantly, you know, increase those numbers?
Uh, percentage that do come to to Palm City Public Schools, of course, it would be all all the ninth graders coming to Palm City Public Schools. And I don't know what their normal numbers would be as far as eighth graders moving into our ninth grade, uh, level, so I I really can't answer that question.
I think that one applies, Jason, because this only talks about the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, this spring only. So there will be no eighth graders coming to ninth graders unless we approve it again next year.
Unless it's approved again next year.
Right.
Well, and then I I think I heard, I'm not sure, maybe somebody might know or not, but I had heard that Luton is going to expand in ninth grade, so they're potentially not even coming to us at all.
I I don't know that for a fact.
I mean, it's a, we call up and I guess it's the, that right, but I'm not sure if it's still, I mean, being in a conservative budget, I mean, I have concerns and questions and how how do we provide the the equity, all the things that go along with it, and our potential, private school expansion, all the stuff that just, I don't know if it's necessarily something that, um, it's not, it's not, it's not that it's us or them or that they aren't Palm City, you know, those types of things. I think they would just be more of a, is is it a strain? Is that part of our experience, is that part of our staff already? We're busting in the scene, we're hearing from parents how awful it is, this bullying and all that stuff. Maybe we need to make sure that we're cleaning up what we got here first.
Yeah, I don't know. And I mean, I think I know what you're trying to get at. Um, I don't know what our numbers are for track in this instance. I don't know if I'd have to come to this and say, hey, we've got too many kids out of track and not enough adult supervision, and we may have to come back to this board to add additional personnel that's just not there. So I I just, I don't know. This is just really the intent on, as Palm City Public Schools want to co-opt with First Lutheran for track this spring. Um, so. But this was good discussion, good dialogue. I'm like, uh, um, we get all the issues out on the table, we see where the board's holding.
So, Don, what we're voting on is either co-opting for this spring only for track only.
Correct.
And is the vote going to be yea, we're for co-opting and nay, we're against it?
But Jeffrey, the motion is to approve or not to approve?
I mean, you get to pick how you want to vote.
Yeah. That's what it's gonna.
So the motion is a yea is for for co-op and a nay is for against it?
Correct.
Yeah, it's either approving or non approving. Just. Approve or. So it'd be whoever makes the motion, if there is a motion.
I thought, I thought somebody had already made it. Do we have a motion?
Did you make a motion to discuss?
Just to discuss, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You either have a motion or the motion's going to die and we're going to move on.
I'll have a motion to approve this item. That way we'll vote what we reveal.
We have a second. Motion does have a second. Move on. Next item will be consider take action on the contract J and B Mechanical Control Nutrition. Any discussion on this item? Roll call.
Judy Truitt.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Anna Rowland.
Aye.
Don Newsom.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.
Next item will be motion to close the convention. This is an executive session for the broad purposes to discuss also termination, reassignment of personnel. The appointment of personnel, appointment of personnel in the past detailed personnel reports to discuss evaluation of superintendent skills. You discuss hardship for a very little bill probably? Yes, we need a second. Thanks, Nancy. Second, the man. Roll call.
Anna Rowland.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Robin Riley.